Welcome to this week's Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting. This meeting is held in the Jackson County Courthouse Auditorium at 10 South Oakdale in Medford. This meeting is held every Wednesday morning at 9:30, as long as a quorum of two commissioners is available to conduct the business of Jackson County. Your Jackson County Commissioners broadcast this meeting over Rogue Valley Television, and it's available for streaming and review at jacksoncountyor.gov. Under the Government tab, under Recorded Meetings, click on RV TV Live Streaming. The types of business that occur at this meeting include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. Agendas of the meetings are posted on the Commissioners Bulletin Board, and released on the county's website, and through local media in the time required for public notice. Many of the conclusions on the business presented to the Board of Commissioners have been discussed in detail and prepared by the Administrative Office and staff prior to consideration at this meeting and the official vote. These prior discussions also have been properly noticed, and the work done in a transparent manner. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings, or watch online at jacksoncountyor.gov. And now, your Jackson County Commissioners, Rick Dyer, Colleen Roberts, and Randy Sparassino, working for you.
Okay, well, we'll call to order the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for June 4th, 2025, and we're in the courthouse auditorium on audio/video conference, and if you will begin if you stand, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, and we're going to do a couple Employee in Years of Service Award first, and we're going to start with Alex Rodriguez from Development Services Department. If you want to meet us at the podium, and there is a whole row in the front here that's available, if anybody wants to come up and sit down, you're welcome to.
Well, what a great crowd, love to see this. It does look like it's a comedy show, nobody wants to sit in the front row. But it's not a comedy show, believe me. We are here to honor our Employee of the Month for June 2025, and that's Alex Rodriguez of Development Services Department, presented this day, June 4th, 2025. Alex Rodriguez began his career with the Jackson County in 2015 as a construction inspector in the Development Services Department. Alex has a wealth of experience, he previously owned a construction company in California, and has worked as a superintendent in the Rogue Valley. Alex is an A-level structural inspector, and has been cross-trained and certified as a residential electrical and plumbing inspector. His extensive knowledge and comprehension of the construction industry prior to joining the county's Building Inspection Division, along with his capacity to conduct various types of inspections, serve as a valuable asset to both the department and the local development community. Alex understands job schedules, that is, that time is valuable, and that the building code is intended to protect the public. His outstanding performance is reflected in the many positive comments from the department's "How are we doing?" public survey form, as well as in the feedback received from the community and local contractors. Alex is focused on finding solutions, and is highly regarded by his coworkers for his collaborative and team-focused attitude, his willingness to assist others, and his calm demeanor, I see that right now. Unbelievably calm.
I'm shaking in my boots.
I could barely hear you breathing. Alex, on behalf of the Jackson County Board of Commissioners, congratulations on being selected as a June Employee of the Month, and thank you for your outstanding dedication to the citizens of Jackson County.
Well, not only do you have a fan club here, it sounds like even in public comments, they're your fans as well, and that's always good to hear, and thank you for that, and for that service, and for, gosh, 10 years at it, that's a long time, yeah, so thank you and congratulations.
I usually try and find some sort of anecdotes that are a little embarrassing about people, and Alex is so squeaky queen, I can't. He started back in the 80s with his family, a second-generation framer, moved on up here, it's great to have him, but if there's one thing that you can talk about Alex, he's a family guy. Five kids, seven grandkids. If you think barbecues by the pool, and eating copious amounts of ice cream afterwards, that's Alex. He's also passionate about motorcycles, loves fixing them, loves racing them, participates in his local motorcycle club, volunteers his time to help keep the trails clean. But Alex's most endearing qualities, he really likes to help people. You can see it in his face, you can see when he comes back to the office and he got to help a homeowner out, you know, you take a construction project on, especially if you're doing it as a homeowner, and they kind of always don't go the way you want. Alex is there to help them through it, and with that, we're glad to have him, and he's just a great service to the county, so congratulations, Alex.
Oh, you want jokes?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I didn't prepare any.
All right.
Anyway, well, thank you for the kind words, and it certainly is an honor to work here at Jackson County, and I feel that there's many in our department that are worthy of this acknowledgement. Sorry? So I greatly appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Okay, so our next award is from the Community Justice Department, for David Neuz and his 25-year anniversary, silver anniversary. So I have the honor of reading all of your accolades this morning. So David Neuz began his career with Jackson County in June of 2000 as a Work Crew Coordinator in the Community Justice Department. During his first summer in this role, he helped launch the department's initial fire crew program. David then moved to a Transition Center Coordinator position, and in August of 2002, he transitioned to his current role as Senior Deputy Parole and Probation Officer. David has successfully obtained his Basic, Intermediate, and Advanced certifications as a parole and probation officer, and has finished more than 1,100 hours of training with the Oregon Department of Public Safety Standards and Training. A lot to get done in 25 years, right? David has assumed several significant roles throughout his time with the county, such as firearms instructor, training officer, and overseeing both the sex offender and general caseloads, frequently dealing with some of the most complex cases. His knowledge of the laws and practices related to community supervision, and his attention to detail, and reliable memory have significantly contributed to helping law enforcement investigations and ensuring successful prosecutions in Jackson County. David, on behalf of the Jackson County Board of Commissioners, congratulations on 25 years of continuous service to Jackson County. You've been a devoted and hard-working employee who consistently offers us your best. Thank you for your dedication to the citizens of Jackson County.
So 25 years in parole and probation, that's tough work. I mean, that is some of the most, I know, demanding emotionally, mentally, it is difficult. But what I want to know is where's all the gray hair? 25 years, and that job, and you still have dark hair, I'm jealous with that. But really, we do appreciate, we have so many great employees, you know, there's never a shortage of being able to find something to honor, and every time we bring somebody up here, I'm amazed at the level of service and just the commitment that you bring, and we do appreciate that. Hopefully, we have you for another 25, looks like you must have started when you were five or six years old, so you probably have that in you, right?
Probably not.
Okay, fair enough.
David, I have had the privilege of knowing you for about 23 or 24 of those 25 years, and I've had the honor to serve as the Community Justice Director in Jackson County, and continue to be, so impressed with you and the work that you do every day, and you're really what we look for when we bring new folks on, they begin with us at the Transition Center, and move through the process to become an adult parole and probation officer of Jackson County. And you are, as I said in the meeting this morning, what people strive to be. You set the example for our department, you set the example for how the community sees us, and I am just so proud to have the opportunity to work alongside you, not just in this role, but as our previous roles together in community corrections. I think that you can see by the number of folks that came to support David today, he is the cornerstone in the work that we do, and I thank you for your 25 years, and I too hope that it's more than 25 years that you stick with us, thank you.
So I was reflecting back on 25 years, and I think the thing that I take away from that is that I worked with a lot of great people over that time, and I appreciate all of them. The work that we do is very difficult, and having great people to work with makes it a little easier.
So I will read the plaque, it says, "For 25 years of dedicated services to the citizens of Jackson County," your anniversary date is actually June 12th, 2000, we're not quite there yet. "But now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners, on behalf of the residents of Jackson County, hereby expresses appreciation for the faithful and efficient services rendered to the people of this county." So congratulations, and thank you.
We have lots of exciting stuff left.
Thank you all for coming. So we're going to move on to our Request for and Discussion of Non-Agenda Items, it's a five-minute limit. Pursuant to the codified ordinances of Jackson County, Section 213.06, members of the public may address any item not on the agenda. However, pursuant to ORS 192.640, the Board of Commissioners is prohibited from discussing a principal subject that is not on the agenda today. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners will listen to your concerns and may consider the matter you raise by asking staff to follow up on any question, or by placing the matter on the agenda for discussion at a future meeting. So we don't have anybody signed up, but if anybody wants to come to the podium and speak, they are sure welcome to, or anybody online, raise your Zoom hand, and we'll bring you into the meeting. And we give you name and address for the record, thank you.
My name is Logan Vaughn, I reside in 1116 Murray, Medford, 97501. I mentioned last week that I plan on being here until something is done. Like I said, I do have three children home and two businesses to run, so when I'm able to make it, I will, but not every week. That said, I know we can't back and forth here, but the last I heard when I left for the meeting last time, from Attorney Benton, is that this is the sole decision of our Sheriff, Nathan Sickler, to decide what goes on at the jail. Of this, I am well aware, he is the highest law actually in the land. Note, side note, he could ask the feds to leave the county if he wanted to, if they came in at any point. That said, I, the jail's ministry is still, I still haven't heard anything back, I've reached out to a couple of you, and I'm hopeful to hear back. Something needs to be done, you know, we're doing the same thing over and over again, and we're expecting a different result. Most of the time, I think when people are here, they're normally asking for money or some sort of a way to fund this, I am willing to do this completely for free, as well as other groups that are wanting to go in there. Like I said, Sheriff Nathan Sickler has essentially delegated power of who can go in there and do ministry to the Chaplain Darrell Wiltrow. Why he's not allowing certain ministries to go in and out of there, I couldn't tell you. But I am here for a reason, I believe that the only solution to these problems, and a lot of the problems the men are having in there, is Yahshua. It is what it is, don't shoot the messenger. I would like to be able to do what I can, or have somebody else, not me, somebody else, but we need to definitely look at what's going on over in our jail as far as getting ministry in there, effective ministry in for the men. And I mentioned last week that I know several of the women who go and do ministry, I didn't mean to say that, I know a few, and it's effective, what they're doing as far as for the women, it's just the men that we're having a problem issuing. Like I said, last week, every time I ever went to jail, over the last 20 years, I asked to speak with the chaplain, I was never afforded that right, and I've heard that actually from several prisoners who are inmates who are lodged, I don't know if the kites are getting lost in the shuffle, or just not getting responded to, but this is an issue that needs to be looked at, and I plan on bringing it up until it's addressed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Logan. Anybody else in the auditorium? Or online?
Madam Chair, there's no one with their Zoom hand raised.
Okay, well, we will move on then to the Consent Calendar. We have minutes of meetings from the Board of Commissioners' Work Session, May 13th, 2025, a regular meeting, May 14th, 2025, and the Board of Commissioners' Staff Meeting for May 15th, 2025. We have an order reappointing Matthew Stephenson to the Jackson County Budget Committee, it's Order Number 102-25, and an order proclaiming June 7th, 2025 as Gold Dust Day, Order Number 103-25.
I'll move to prove the consent calendar is read.
Second.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparassino?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparassino, do you authorize the use of your electronic signature for the consent calendar that was approved?
Yes, I do.
And with the proclamation, I'd like to read the order, it's in the matter of proclaiming June 7th, 2025 as Gold Dust Day, this is in honor also of their 130th year of being a city, and so whereas Oregon House Bill 18, an act to incorporate the town of Gold Hill in the county of Jackson, state of Oregon, was passed by the Legislative Assembly of the state of Oregon, and signed into law by the Governor of Oregon on February 12th, 1895, and whereas the city of Gold Hill has a rich history of mining, is a vibrant beloved city renowned for its beauty, its scenic beauty, and its unique relationship with the mighty Rogue River, and whereas the city of Gold Hill, driven by perseverance and community spirit, has continued to thrive through the dedication, enduring strength, and character of its residents, local businesses, and public servants for 130 years, and whereas the city of Gold Hill honors its heritage through annual celebrations commemorating the town's mining history with Gold Dust Day each June, and whereas the city of Gold Hill looks forward to a future filled with promise, progress, and continued community engagement. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County hereby proclaims June 7th, 2025 as Gold Dust Day, signed this 4th day of June. And I will say, our Gold Hill, some of our county council, Mayor and Lori, who's the Can Do Chairman of this event, came today, and so thank you, Mayor Palmer, for coming, and Councilor Bergren, if I get that right? And I have the privilege of being the liaison to the city of Gold Hill, and they're pretty excited, Saturday's their event, and I think it kicks off at 9:00, and it's going to be a nice hot day, which I like. So, thank you for coming. We are going to move on to a public hearing, a public hearing in order in the matter of adopting the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for Jackson County, it's Order Number 104-25. Shannon Bell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. On March 31st, April 7th, and April 8th of 2025, the Jackson County Budget Committee held public meetings and public hearings to review the recommended budget for fiscal year 2025-2026. Following deliberations on April 8th, 2025, the Budget Committee approved the budget for Jackson County by Order Number 56-25, in the amount of $660,109,748, and full-time equivalent positions in the amount of $980.18 for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2025. The county's permanent rate limit is 2.0099 per 1,000 of assessed value, the adopted budget would impose the full rate. In accordance with Oregon Rev. Statute 294.438, a summary of the budget approved by the Budget Committee and the hearing notice for this meeting were published in the Rogue River Press on Wednesday, May 28th, 2025. Following the public hearing, the Board of Commissioners may make modifications to the budget approved by the Budget Committee within the 10% limit set by ORS 294.456. It is recommended that the public hearing be held. Following the public hearing, should the Board of Commissioners concur with the approved budget, approval of the order will adopt the budget for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Thank you. And before we open the public hearing, we will get rules that we have to follow, right?
There are really more rules for the public than there are rules for the board, but I'll read the rules.
Our public mostly all laugh. But these guys need rules, so go ahead.
Following the rules for the conduct of the public hearing, only the chairperson or member of the Board of Commissioners may question a speaker, there'll be no interruption of a speaker from the audience, no debates on the floor. Applause is not permitted, the speaker may criticize the proposal, the board, or an agency of the county, but shall not argue with another speaker directly. A speaker may present an opposite view, but not in personal terms. A person wishing to speak, she will either raise her hands, sign in, or raise his or her Zoom hand, and first be recognized by the chairperson conducting the hearing. After being recognized, the speaker shall state his or her name and address before proceeding with the statement. The chairperson may delimit the duration of any presentation, the time necessary to cover factual information, repetition shall be avoided. Whoever violates any statute rules shall first be warned by the chairperson, insists from such violation, and admit that such person does not so assist, he or she may be ordered by the chairperson to leave the hearing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And so with that, we will open the public hearing on the Jackson County 2025-2026 budget, and nobody signed up, but you're sure welcome to come speak, or if anybody online would like to speak, we would love to hear from you.
Madam Chair, there's no one with their Zoom hand raised.
Okay, and nobody signed up, nobody's coming forward, so we will close the public hearing, and take a motion and deliberate.
I will move approval of Order Number 104-25.
Second.
And I'll open it for discussion.
Well, I'll start again, too. Again, something that's been taken for granted, but another year balanced budget, even amidst this climate of declining revenues, and of course, increasing costs, we have always been able to find a way to make sure that we do deliver the robust service levels we need. There have been some difficult decisions, and I think we've always had an eye towards the most fiscal responsible path, fiscally responsible path, and what benefits the citizens the most. And again, it's resulted in what I think is a budget that does a great service to the citizens of Jackson County. We, again, still have strong reserves that are mostly more or less earmarked for vital capital construction projects, but we're able to do those without asking for any additional tax to the public, and again, maintaining the robust service levels and infrastructure that does benefit people for the long run.
I agree. Commissioner Sparassino, do you?
Yeah, I echo the sentiments of Commissioner Dyer, I also want to thank the hard work of our staff on presenting this balanced budget, as well as the Community Budget Committee members that work diligently on the budget as well.
Yep, thank you, there's a lot of work, kind of goes on year-round, I think, as this gets put together, and we're on top of the uncertainty, you know, federal dollars and budgeting accordingly and conservatively, and I appreciate that, I constantly see our county do more with less, or as much and better, and when we saw the map of all the counties, and Jackson County was a bright shining white amongst many that are not running as strong and conservative as our county is, it's a pleasure to be part of that, and takes lots of eyes on it, we appreciate every eye that we have on our budget, and the community as well, as they have ideas and interactions, their input on this budget too, so, good job, everyone.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparassino?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Do you want to get a signature? Oh, you can wait till the end? Okay, will do. All right, so we'll go on to discussion and deliberation, as we have an order authorizing a Jackson County Services Contract with Leibowitz &amp; Horton Airport Management Consultants, Incorporated, Order Number 105-25.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The airport department is planning a terminal expansion at the Rogue Valley International Medford Airport, and will utilize Leibowitz &amp; Horton Airport Management Consultants, Incorporated, for financial analysis related to project budget, design of the terminal expansion concept, and budget report, financial implementation plan. Term of the contract is upon execution through May 31st of 2026, estimated $117,000 expense to the airport department, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you.
I will move approval of Order Number 105-25.
Second.
Any discussion? I would just say, in the light of our balanced, wonderful budget, we're still planning projects, and our airport expansion's going to be incredible, so.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparassino?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Our second item is an order authorizing a Jackson County Services Contract with KSW Architects LLC, Order Number 106-25.
Speaking of contracts, the Jackson County Animal Shelter has reached the end of its useful life. The new Jackson County Dog Control Facility will provide labor-efficient kennels and meet modern best practices for dog care. The Dog Control Facility is proposed to be constricted on property owned by Jackson County. Jackson County, through its Facility Maintenance Department, issued a request for qualifications on February 18th of 2025, and received three statements of qualifications. KSW Architects LLC was selected as the most qualified, and negotiated a scope and fee of 9% of the Design and Construction Administration Services, based on a total estimated construction cost of $13 million. The term of the contract is upon execution through August 31st of 2027, estimated $11,170,000 expense, and we will also reimburse up to $99,000 in allowable expenses.
Thank you.
I will move approval of Order Number 106-25.
Second.
Any discussion?
It'd be great to have a much more modern and efficient facility to be able to undertake the service that we provide there.
Yeah, and I agree, I think this is another capital project that we wanted to do much greater on, but the citizens said no, and we're living within our means, putting together a great shelter that our county can afford, so it was a tough decision, I think, too, but glad we're moving forward on it, so. Any other discussion? Take a vote.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparassino?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Our next item is an order authorizing a service agreement with Cannon-Cochran Management Services, Incorporated, Order Number 107-25. Ms. Bell?
Thank you. Jackson County will contract with Cannon-Cochran Management Services for the administration of workers' compensation claims. Term of the agreement is July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026, and will automatically renew for four additional one-year terms. It's a $68,000 estimated annual expense to our Workers' Comp Fund.
I will move approval of Order Number 107-25.
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay. Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparassino?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
All right, and then we have next, a first reading, scheduling of a second reading, and public hearing. and public hearing of an ordinance approving a minor comprehensive plan map and zoning map amendment to change the comprehensive plan map from commercial land and White City urban residential land to industrial land and to rezone a parcel containing 2.09 acres located at 2291 to rezone a parcel containing .75 acres located at 2291 Gramercy Drive, White City, from general commercial to light industrial, and to rezone a parcel containing .75 acres located at 2297 Gramercy Drive, White City, from White City Urban Residential 4 to light industrial. The properties are further described as Township 36 South, Range 1 West, Section 20C, Tax Lot 400, and Township 36 South, Range 1 West, Section 20CD, Tax Lot 1300, PAC Holdings LLC, applicant file number 439-24-00008, LRP, ordinance number 2025-3. I really butchered that up. There's a lot of moving parts in this order.
You had a mouthful.
Go ahead.
I have it easy.
Oh, good.
All right, so the proposed light industrial zoning designation will provide expanded use of the property, which will help reduce and remove metal waste from Jackson County. It is recommended that the first reading of the ordinance be held on June 4th, 2025, and the second reading and public hearing be scheduled for Wednesday, June 18th, 2025, at 1:30 p.m. in the courthouse auditorium and by audio/video conference. If adopted on June 18th, 2025, the ordinance will become effective on August 18th, 2025, and there's no financial impact.
Thank you.
All right, well, I will move approval of the first reading and scheduling of the second, the public hearing, and second reading of the public hearing scheduled for Wednesday, June 18th, 2025, at 1:30 here in the courthouse auditorium for ordinance number 2025-3.
Second.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparassino?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And next item is order authorizing Jackson County Purchase Order Number 86324 with Western Emulsions, Incorporated, Order Number 108-25. Ms. Bell?
That one was easier, all right.
It was.
Thank you. So the Roads and Parks Department requires a supply of EarthBind 100 for the surface stabilization program. This product is unique and only available locally through Western Emulsions, Inc., as authorized by determination of sole source under Jackson County Local Contract Review Board Rules Division 1-60.E8AB and Oregon Revise Statute 279B.075. There is a $250,000 financial impact expense to the Roads and Parks Department.
Thank you.
All right, I'll move approval of Order Number 108-25.
Second.
Any discussion? Makes our road safe, apparently.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparassino?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Our final item on our agenda is an order authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Medford and Jackson County, it's Order Number 109-25. Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jackson County, through its Sheriff's Office and city of Medford, submitted an application to the United States Department of Justice for the 2024 Edward Byrne Grant. The city of Medford is the administrator for these grant funds and will distribute funds to the county, which will be used for the purchase of law enforcement safety equipment. Term of the agreement is October 1st, 2024, through September 30th, 2026, and requires ratification to become effective October 1st, 2024. There's a financial impact of $12,323 to the Sheriff's Office.
Great, thank you.
I'll move approval of Order Number 109-25.
Second.
I will just add, this is like another one of the federal grants. They aren't all being stopped and we continue to be able to offer services from those funds, so that's awesome.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparassino?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparassino, do you authorize the use of your electronic signature on the ordinance and the orders that were approved today?
Yes, I do.
Okay, well, we took a load of budgets today and agenda items doing business for Jackson County, so with that, we will adjourn the meeting.